Twenty-fourth, two thousand and fourteen. Clerk, if you'll call the roll, please.
Counselor McCormick.
Here.
Counselor Camardo.
Here.
Counselor Cuddy.
Here.
Counselor Resika is not with us this evening, and Mayor Quill.
Here.
Counselor Resika is excused.
Would you join us in the Pledge of Allegiance, and then after, we will stand for a moment of silent prayer reflection?
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
If you remain standing for a moment of silent prayer reflection. Thank you. Please be seated. We will start out, as usual, with our public to be heard. This time, is there anyone? Or, excuse me. Clerk, if you read our rules and regulations.
Sir, at this time, we will open the public-to-be-heard portion of the council meeting as a reminder pursuant to City Council Rules of Procedure. Prior to addressing council, speakers are asked to state their name, address, and any affiliation. Your remarks must be limited to three minutes and concern only issues involving the City Council, city government, or matters of general city concern, and all speakers before council will observe commonly accepted rules of courtesy and decorum.
Thank you. Is our timer set up here? Dr. Aikman, I guess you're first.
Thanks very much, Mayor. My name is Walt Aikman, Seventeen Liberty Street, here in Auburn. I'm here to remind everyone, tomorrow is officially National Arbor Day. The National Arbor Day Foundation, long ago, with Jay Sterling Morton, set up the last Friday of April to be Arbor Day.
Excuse me, once. Ladies and gentlemen, could you respect the speaker up here, please?
So, when you work with the National Arbor Day Foundation, you get to celebrate Arbor Day anytime you want, but the main thing you do is you celebrate the importance of planting trees and their contribution to your community and their role in the sustainable ecosystem. And I'm really happy about it because today I got to help plant trees at the Community College Nature Trail, and it was fun just to help students plant trees because one of the professors at the college, Sheila Myers, who is the experiential education coordinator, and I know she's met with the city manager, she set up a fantastic program. She bought the trees, she got a grant, she got the students organized, and I just get to sit back, well, jump in with both feet and help plant. And it was a really exciting day for the college. But next week, I'm hoping you'll join the community at the Seward House to celebrate National Arbor Day as part of their first Friday activities to kick off their first Friday season as we turn towards, well, one day soon, summer, right? It will get warmer and warmer. And then Saturday, May third, we're going to do a community tree planting. We're working very closely, the volunteers with the city, and we expect to plant some trees right in this neighborhood. And you meet us on Saturday morning at 9:00 a.m. on May third, right over by the gazebo across the street. This is a big step for us to celebrate a partnership with the two cornerstone owners on South Street, right? The Seward House and the City Hall. Look at it this way: if we can't have a sustainable corridor on South Street, where in Auburn are we going to do it? It's going to be a thrilling project. Please come out and help. We could use all the extra hands and shovels that you bring with you. Thank you very much, everyone.
Thank you. Is there anyone else desiring to be heard this evening?
Ron Quill, Case Avenue. Just want to remind everybody, as I have before, I'm the board chairman at Salvation Army. Please remember our food pantries. I know it's getting a little bit warmer, but people still need to eat, so if you could do one item per person, per household, a month, it would really do a lot for the food pantries. Thank you very much.
Anyone else desiring to be heard this evening? Full house, no one wants to talk. Very well, we'll close the public-to-be-heard. We'll move along to the approval of the meeting minutes from April fifteenth, two thousand and fourteen. Do we have a sponsor? Counselor McCormick, seconded by Counselor Camardo. Discussion? Clerk, if you call the roll, please.
Approve the minutes of April fifteenth, two thousand and fourteen. Counselor McCormick.
Aye.
Counselor Camardo.
Yes.
Counselor Cuddy.
Yes.
Mayor Quill.
Aye.
Carrie.
Presentation and proclamation, clerk?
Sure. There's gonna be three proclamations tonight. The first: Whereas Jenna Blaisdell Hinman is the wife of U.S. Army Sergeant Brandon Hinman, daughter of Kim and Jeff Blaisdell, and sister to Joshua Blaisdell, she had an emergency C-section to deliver her twin girls, Kinlay Ann and Aslyn Mary, on March thirteenth, two thousand and fourteen. And whereas immediately after the twins arrived, they were taken to NICU, and Jenna was diagnosed with stage-three choriocarcinoma, a very rare pregnancy-related cancer. And whereas this devastating disease requires extreme medical intervention to manage her pain, stabilize her deteriorating lungs, and sustain internal bleeding, this cancer has filled her body with tumors and lesions, and whereas Jenna is currently receiving chemotherapy and on several medical machines to assist her body to fight for her life and have her slowly weaning off of these machines, according to her doctors. And whereas Jenna has a long battle ahead of her and can use all of the help and support she can get, Jenna has a Facebook page called Praying for Jenna with over two-hundred-and-seven-thousand-plus people liking the page with their support, along with a fundraising website to assist the family with all the future challenges they may face with Jenna and the girl's recovery at gofundme.com/thehinmanfund. Now therefore, Michael D. Quill, Mayor of the City of Auburn, New York, on behalf of the City Council and the citizens of Auburn, hereby proclaims April twenty-sixth, two thousand and fourteen to be designated as Jenna Blaisdell Hinman Day in the City of Auburn, and further proclaim that this citation be presented to the Hinman Blaisdell family as a token of our support and sincerest desire to one day welcome Jenna and her family back home safe and in good health.
And accepting it's this evening be Kim Blaisdell, Jenna's ma'am?
I want to say thank you to the City of Auburn and everybody that has been on this horrific journey with us. My daughter is fighting for her life, and she's doing an incredible job. She is, she is not in recovery, but she has made tremendous strides. Her cancer count was, when she first was diagnosed, at two-point-three million. As of yesterday, it was two-hundred-and-thirty-six. So she is making a tremendous progress. We do have the twins home with us, and they're thriving and doing wonderful. Thank you for the City of Auburn and everybody for all their prayers and continued support. Thank you.
About three years ago, I performed a marriage right here in the council chambers, not knowing the bride or the groom. It turns out Ron Quill, myself, are related to the bride, and it was interesting meeting a cousin. I thought I knew all of them, but there's just so many, so I're all the best for your family. We're all looking forward to it and staying, keeping them in our thoughts, so best of luck. Mr. Mason?
Sure. Whereas every ten, whereas every year, tens of thousands of American workers are killed by workplace injuries and occupational disease, and whereas thousands more are permanently disabled, millions are injured or become ill as a result of workplace hazards, and whereas four decades ago, Congress passed the Occupational Safety and Health Act, promising every worker the right to a safe job, and whereas unions and allies have fought hard to make that promise a reality-winning protections that have made jobs safer, save hundreds of thousands of lives, and prevent millions of workplace injuries and illnesses. And whereas we recognize and celebrate Workers Memorial Day on the twenty-eighth day of April each year, with this year's theme being "Safe Jobs, Save Lives, Make Your Voice Heard." Now therefore, Michael D. Quill, Mayor of the City of Auburn, New York, on behalf of the City Council and the working men and women of Auburn, do hereby proclaim today, or do hereby proclaim Saturday, April twenty-fourth, two thousand and fourteen, as Workers Memorial Day in the City of Auburn, and encourage all Auburn citizens to join the mayor in remembering fallen workers and to do everything possible to prevent future tragedies.
And accepting this is Jessica Corcoran. Do I see Jessica? And I know she has other members from the other working units in the city here with her.
I'm not gonna talk, and I love you, and I'm not gonna give you a chance.
I'd like to accept this on behalf of Keoga County Labor Council. You know, it's a very important proclamation. There are many city workers injured on the job every year due to a variety of reasons. And I think we owe the city workers a round of applause for how hard they work every day to bring all the services that are required to this city. They, a lot of them put their lives on the line, and they do work hard. So, thank you very much. This is an honor.
Thank you. Thank you. Jessica, would you like to recognize your other union members?
I could do that. I could do it from either microphone. We have Tony DiCaro here, who is CSEA, and we have Officer Catrell, who is police. We have Jeff Deiger hiding in the corner, and Officer Catrell, who's with you?
Officer Joe Venetti.
Officer Joe Venetti. We also have a few other city workers here. We have the comptroller. We have Tim Clark in the back, Mr. Ordjewelski, Christina Salvick. Am I missing anybody that I don't see? Oh, where's Shannon? And Jenny Haynes, who works in our planning department. Thank you.
Don't want to overlook Captain Argello either, back there. He's trying to remain kinda high.
I can't see behind all the heads.
Please, sir.
Whereas the American Occupational Therapy Association has declared the month of April two thousand and fourteen to be known as National Occupational Therapy Month, and whereas the profession of occupational therapy makes valuable contributions in helping people live life to its fullest after an illness or injury, and whereas the services of occupational therapy are available to citizens of the City of Auburn and Keoga County through Auburn Community Hospital healthcare system, and whereas the health and productivity of our citizens depend upon the effective use of healthcare resources, including the important services of occupational therapists and occupational therapy assistants. Now therefore, Michael D. Quill, Mayor of the City of Auburn, New York, on behalf of the City Council, does hereby proclaim the month of April two thousand and fourteen as National Occupation Therapy Month in the City of Auburn, and call upon all citizens to recognize the achievements and contributions of these valued health professionals.
With us this evening is Mr. Douglas Fai. And I don't know if you're with Community Hospital, maybe you can tell us a little
Good evening, everyone. My name is Dr. Fai. I'm the Director of Rehabilitation Services at Auburn Community Hospital, and on behalf of the hospital, I would like to thank the City of Auburn and the Honorable Mayor Quill and his staff for the proclaiming in the month of April two thousand and fourteen being recognized as National Occupational Therapy Month. Occupational therapy is therapy based on engaging patients in meaningful activities of daily life and work, despite impairments or limitations in their physical or mental functioning, with a goal to help them achieve optimal independence, meaning and satisfaction in all areas. The occupational therapists at Auburn Community Hospital, some of whom are here with us this evening, provide exceptional quality and very compassionate care in serving the many patients of greater Auburn, Keoga County, and even beyond. Auburn Community Hospital occupational therapists deliver their services in the acute care at the hospital, at the short-term rehabilitation at the Finger Lake Center of Living Nursing Home, and they are the only certified occupational therapy provider for outpatient care within Keoga County. In two thousand and thirteen, the occupational therapist team provided direct care to over one-thousand-four-hundred patients requiring skilled occupational therapy services, and they look forward to continuing to serve the ongoing needs of the greater Auburn community. So thank you again for this proclamation.
Thank you, doctor. Thanks for being with us. Guess we've run out of proclamations for this evening, so getting worn out, going back and forth. At this time, I'd like to introduce Charlie Green and Jim Beckwith with Awala, Wasco Lake Watershed. Gentlemen?
Good evening. I'm Jim Beckwith, and this is Charlie Green. I'm Vice President of Owasco Watershed Lake Association, and Charlie is our illustrious President of Owasco Watershed Lake Association. What we're doing here tonight is briefing the council on a little bit about what Awala is, but also, and how we interact with the community, with the city, with the watershed, and other organizations within our scope of the watershed and Owasco Lake. We're gonna start with who we are, what we do, our primary concerns, our approaches and recommendations. Who we are. We are a watershed-wide citizen watch group, watchdog group. Basically, what we are is an organization of not just lakeside owners, not just watershed people, and the watershed is over two-hundred square miles, but also the quality of the citizens for Auburn, many of them are members of Awala, and many, many, and almost all of the towns in Keoga County. To do this, we also work with the Keoga County Water Quality Management Agency. We work with the Owasco Lake Watershed Management Council, which is a fairly new organization, few years old, and more and more of the towns are joining this organization so that we can work in helping to protect the lake. Also, we work with the Finger Lakes Regional Watershed Alliance Group. That is a group of eleven lakes, and we meet over at the Finger Lakes Institute in Geneva about every other month and go through and see where we have common interests, common problems, and so that we can share those and come back to our groups and be able to hopefully have some solutions. Also, we work with the New York State Federation of Lake Associations, and one of our members of Awala and also IAGT, Bob Brower, is actually going to be doing a presentation at that annual meeting in a couple of weeks. What we do, we are charged with restoring, protecting, preserving Owasco Lake and the How do we do it? Well, we definitely have monthly meetings, but we're, we have a very strong core group that are meeting constantly in many different avenues of working with the city, with the county, with private people, with AG, with DEC. And along with the monthly meetings, we also have presentations, so that some of our meetings are work-related meetings, some are presentation meetings. We've also put in a strategic planning group. We're working very hard on that. The main reason for that is so that we hopefully will be getting a number of grants, and to do that, we have to, as all of you know, we have to be well organized. Part of that is also the public participation in projects. I'm going to just touch base on the, on the public participation, and Charlie's going to take over on the projects. As far as public participation, we are trying to make people aware of not only the lake, which is surprising, a lot of people don't even understand the importance of the lake to every area, whether it be Fair Haven, whether it be down towards Lock and that area. But to do this, we have a couple major programs that we put on. One is a March to Lake Day, which we start the year off, and that's a symposium of scientists, of very knowledgeable people that help show what is going on with the lake, with Owasco Lake, the problems with it, and how we can help cure some of the concerns. We also have a Lake Day, which is June twenty-fifth this year at the Pavilion, and that is more of a family time. It's a time when, at the first part of the program, we bring Mr. Hafman in. He gives us a presentation on the condition of the lake, and we have music, and we bring in kids to try to make them more aware of what's going on on the lake. We're also putting together a citizens monitoring program. This is new. We hope to have that in place by our Lake Day in June. And what that will be is if someone has a concern, we'll have a form, they will need to fill out that form, and we will get it to the right agency, the right organization, so that if we have a problem, or if there's a compliment, you know, those do happen once in a while, but not too often, they can do that. And also, we have a very strong websites, www.AwalaOrganization, and also the Owasco Lake Organization. Also fairly new is our Owasco Lake series on ARMA. And ARMA is the Auburn Regional Media Access Group, and we have programs, this is what you're all on during the week, and we're participating in that and putting on some of our programs that we have had in our meetings, and they are going on also. And I think from this point on, Charlie, if you'd like to take over?
Thanks, Jim.
Okay.
First thing I'd like to say is I'd like to thank the City of Auburn for your continued funding for watershed inspection. There was a number of years where there were no watershed inspectors after Mr. Farrell retired, and we really appreciate with the tough budget that all municipalities face that you continue to show your support for Owasco Lake. Two of the projects that are ongoing in this year, through the efforts of our elected officials, primarily State Senator Jim Seward and our Assemblyman Gary Finch, we've, and we've partnered, Awala has partnered with the Keoga County Soil and Water Conservation District, and a couple of weeks ago, Mayor Quill and others joined us at the Town Hall in Owasco to receive a grant from the New York State for two-hundred thousand dollars to begin the restoration of Dutch Hollow Brook. Dutch Hollow Brook is located at Burdis Point on the east side of Owasco Lake. Twenty percent of the surface water that flows into Owasco Lake comes out of the Dutch Hollow Brook watershed. In addition, at the point where it discharges at Burdis Point, Dutch Hollow Brook is about fifteen-hundred feet south of the intakes for Auburn's water treatment facility. This winter, there's been some tussling with, between Awala and members of the agricultural community. We've worked with them very diligently over the last three years, and I think we have a lot more common understanding with the agricultural community. However, in the town of Cipio, both in February and March, there were a number of occasions where what appears to be manure-laden water was discharging directly into the lake. New York State D.C. is, has this situation under investigation. The Owasco Lake Watershed Management Council, which is the intermunicipal organization that Auburn, Owasco, and many of the other towns in the watershed have joined together, have supported the efforts to try to resolve this matter. The other thing Awala has done for more than twenty years is have a volunteer testing program for water quality. We test for bacteria and phosphorus in the water. This is a picture of the discharge in Cipio that I was just speaking about, and I guess we're starting again, but really making a point of stressing it that we are asking people for help to keep manure out of Owasco Lake. It's not just a matter that the water is dirty, but this sediment settles to the bottom of the lake and remains there for a period of time, and I'll talk about that in just a moment. Our primary concerns at Awala are excess plant, meaning vegetative plant nutrients entering Owasco Lake. The suite of pollution that affects Owasco Lake is the manure pathogens, meaning virus, bacteria, Cryptosporidium, other things, and you'll hear, if you pay attention to Owasco Lake, people talk about E. coli or coliform. Coliform serves as a surrogate to measure pathogens in the lake. Since nineteen ninety-eight, New York State D.C. has said that, has classified Owasco Lake as being impaired by pathogens for contact, meaning for recreation and for swimming. Phosphorus is a fertilizer. It's a nutrient. One pound of phosphorus in Owasco Lake grows five-hundred pounds of weeds. HAB stands for harmful algae blooms. In particular, we're concerned about green, excuse me, blue-green algae blooms. Both blue-green algae and green algae, when they degrade in the lake, when they die, they are, become organic material. The organic material is received, for example, by the City of Auburn's water treatment plant. One of the steps in the treatment of water for the residents of Auburn and much of Keoga County, approximately sixty to seventy percent of the residents in the county receive water from Owasco Lake now, is the use of chlorine. And the combination of chlorine with elevated levels of organic material from the algae, from the degraded water, there are chemical byproducts that are known to cause, known to cause birth defects and cancer, so that going forward, this is gonna become more and more a big issue. Invasive species, you've all heard of invasive species. One of the species we have now in Owasco Lake is Asian clam, and the Asian clams, this, I'll talk about them in a minute, but one of the things that the City of Auburn can do as a regulator of the water level is the water levels can, when there's not a construction project or such in the outlet, and in a typical year, can regulate by lowering the lake level and essentially freeze out some of the Asian clams, so help suppress the population. We also wanted to talk just briefly about the lake level regulation that Auburn provides to Owasco Lake, and our major request, we've met with both the mayor and Councilwoman McCormick to discuss this this winter, and also with the city manager, Mr. Selby. We would request that going forward, as the city becomes more attuned to managing the lake level, both for recreation purposes, but also for renewable energy with your hydroelectric facilities that are becoming online this summer, that you, in effort- facilities that are becoming online this summer, that you, an effort be made to communicate to the residents, in particular, the waterside residents on the lake as to, you know, projections as best as possible. This was an exceptional winter with the lake being held high for the construction of the hydroelectric facilities, and the thick ice on the lake, approximately 20 residents on the lake, their properties were significantly damaged. And it's more a matter of just if things are going to change, if the city would be able to notify the residents so they could take advantage of, you know, protecting their property. Also, we wanted to mention that Aula and IAGT are searching for funding from local foundations so that we can hire, if you will, student interns to give them practical experience and possibly that would result in jobs in the local community in the environmental and water resources field. This is a zebra, excuse me, this is an Asian clam, and, sure. We're going to show you the size of that, that's a one-half inch stainless steel washer. And what Jim's showing you right now is there's a sawtooth pattern right at the hinge, and that indicates that it's an Asian clam rather than a native freshwater clam. The big deal about Asian clams is that they're able to extract the plant nutrient phosphorus from sediments on the bottom of Owasco Lake. And they take the sort of sequestered phosphorus that's built up over the years, and they turn it into a soluble form. And the soluble form of phosphorus, in other words, it's soluble in the lake, it essentially causes a colony or the growth of colonies of green algae and blue-green algae. Thirty percent of the time, and it's a sort of, there's always been some algae in Owasco Lake, but the blue-green algae is becoming more common and more prevalent, and about 30 percent of the time, nobody really knows why, blue-green algae blooms are toxic to mammals, including humans. And in New York State, blue-green algae has been known to kill dogs that have been swimming in lakes such as this. So that this is sort of, this particular invasive species is actually making the problems of Owasco Lake worse. This is the last slide. I wanted to just make some recommendations, if I may, to the City Council of Auburn. Aula's primary goal right now in terms of a project or an action item is we need to stop nutrients, plant nutrients, from getting into the streams and creeks around Owasco Lake. They'll get into the lake that way. We need to work with the agricultural community to stop manure and mineral fertilizers from getting into Owasco Lake. Again, the nutrients are fostering the growth of this organic material, it's degrading the quality of the lake, and it is potentially going to cause harm to the people that drink water from Owasco Lake, even though it's been processed by municipalities such as Auburn and the town of Owasco. Aula is asking the City of Auburn to place the restoration of Owasco Lake on your agenda, if for no other reason that the disinfection of degraded water from Owasco Lake is not a sustainable long-term solution, as I explained earlier. On top of that, can you imagine how future generations will look back on us if, through technology, we can continue to use the water to drink from Owasco Lake, but Owasco Lake is no longer a safe place to swim? Finally, I'd like to ask you to use your political influence behind our effort to keep nutrients out of Owasco Lake. Thank you. If there's any questions, we'd be happy to answer them.
I don't have a question in particularly, but I wanted to thank you, Jim and Charlie. You people have worked a long, hard time before I got involved. I can tell, and I've learned an awful lot in three months just from attending the meetings, and it's really obvious, there's a, I hate to use the word disconnect, but there is a disconnect between the people, between myself, when I turn on my water, and I just love that it comes out, and there it is. But it comes from Owasco Lake, and I don't think we, as citizens of Auburn, really get it. I really don't. I'm sorry, I know the phone's going to ring, but we really need to pay more attention as citizens of Auburn to the lake, the lake itself, and the people that have industry, agriculture, or what, around the lake, it's going to, what Charlie just said about the future generations, it's what we have to think of. That lake, right now, people don't swim in the lake now. It's not a good place to go swimming. Around the shorelines of the lake, if you want to go, you have to go way out into the middle of the lake. So right now, we're talking about a problem that we really need to stop talking about and get passionate about. I know that Aula, the different county organizations that are working on the lake, county planning, county soil and water, the county really has got a lot of different departments working on the watershed. They've all gone to the higher levels of government, our representatives, state and federal, and they just send us nice letters back, to be honest. Just, "Thank you for writing, we've heard you," that's great. They need to hear from voters. They need to hear from citizens, those that can give us the funds to do the things that need to be done. And I think we need to hear here at City Council a lot more often so that it helps city residents see the impact that not paying attention to the lake is having, I think. I know you've been working hard, I know. And I thank you for coming today. I wish you could spend the next two hours, but you can't.
But thank you also.
Yeah.
Debbie, and you're on the committee now.
Yeah. It's a big, it's a lot.
I'd like to say one last thing, is that in about 1918, there was an epidemic in Auburn because of the poor quality of the drinking water and the wells that everybody had in their backyard. And our grandfathers and great-grandfathers, with the meager resources that were at hand directly after World War I, they had two choices, really. One choice was to install sanitary wells in everybody's backyards and just sort of deal with the problem for the next five or 10 years. But instead, at great cost, if you think what the economy was like at that time, they purchased land down in Moravia, not, you know, which was a long ways away, it was a train ride away at that time, to help protect the inlet area around Owasco Lake. And they built, on the edge of Auburn, the north edge of Auburn, a wastewater treatment plant, and they built a water treatment plant. At tremendous cost, at tremendous hardship, and they didn't like taxes any more than people today like taxes. And as you all know, probably many of our fathers and grandfathers and great-grandfathers of that time were working for 50 cents, 75 cents an hour. So I appreciate what Debbie said, and I think it's important for us to think about generations to come, they may look back and say, you know, "You folks really had good incomes, you had the understanding," and so I encourage Auburn to help join us in our efforts to keep Owasco Lake clean.
Counsel Cuddy.
I'd also, I'd like to thank you both for the presentation, and I personally would like to put, you know, the restoration of Owasco Lake as one of the priorities of this council's agenda. And I see it as, you know, I see it as a priority, priority as you do, and obviously, the manure going into the lake, you had mentioned that the D.C. is aware of this. Are they, what kind of authority do they have to, I guess, can they find these farmers, and can they, is that in the process so that, you know, they can set an example for other farmers that are doing this kind of work? And I also do support, you know, what you're doing as far as the monitoring of it, because you need to monitor this so that, so that the farmers know that people are watching and that.
And also, I mean, almost all the farmers, most of the farmers are good stewards of the land, and they are very contentious, but we do have a few, and hopefully they're going, one in particular is going to be fined or something will happen.
I think what we're doing, Mr. Cuddy, is that there are, the farmers that are involved with Cugee Marketing out in Aurelius, they really want to reduce their environmental footprint, both in Cugee County and around the nation and around the world. You know, dairy farmers in particular want to sort of lead the effort, and in particular, in this particular case, as well as the D.C. and the state regulators talking to this farmer, the, a number of the local large farmers, and the farmer we're talking about is a large farmer, are actually, have actually reached out and are trying to help provide solutions so that going forward, the farmer has, that we're talking about has options other than spreading manure in the winter, which is really was the problem in this case. So there's a lot of, a lot of focus on that, and we encourage you all to help us with that and to help, you know, the farm community as it takes more and more responsibility going forward.
I like the idea of strategic planning, almost like some kind of, you know, an idea where there's some kind of, within this watershed, certain codes or almost like a handbook as far as, you know, these are the, I mean, obviously, the law, the D.C., but almost, you know, if, if we're going to use this area as an attraction for tourists, and we want people to swim in our lake, and we want, and for recreational purposes, you know, it has to be a comprehensive effort. And, you know, I know that, you know, this council values the importance of this lake in so many ways, and I want to, you know, I'm interested in adding to that conversation of strategic and comprehensive plan, where the communication is, works back and forth from, you know, from agriculture to municipalities to the state. But I really think, you know, we're on, we're on the right track, but I do agree with Debbie that more needs to be done, and, you know, awareness of the people and, and us as elected officials to really push it forward and work with organizations like yours. So, thank, well, thank you.
Gentlemen, thank you for your work that you've done. I'm glad you pointed that out, because there are hard-working farmers and individuals along the lake who try very hard to protect one of the greatest resources we have in this community. But it takes everybody to work together and make sure that we're protecting our watershed and providing good water to not only the residents of the city, but all the people who take, you know, are, have an advantage to use the water of the city and the surrounding communities. So thank you for your work.
Thanks.
Jim and Charlie, thank you for everything you do. Owasco Lake does affect everyone here in the community in one way or another. Keep up the good fight. We've loaned you, Councilor McCormick, and I'm sure she will keep you up in the hard fight, so, but thank you for being here with us this evening.
Okay, you're welcome.
We really appreciate you inviting us.
Your, your.
Thank you, thank you.
Mayor, while you're passing those out, our new watershed inspector's been on board about maybe six weeks. I told him them the other day, once the budget was done, and that probably in July, like to, well, first, in between times, I think we're going to have him meet the manager and Mr. DiCaro, but have him come to City Council and do a little presentation.
Thank you. Well, we'll ask you to be the point person when we're ready to do that, so.
Sure, thank you.
Very good, thank you. Mr. Selby, if you'd like to take over for our next presentation, please.
Sure. As the council's aware, every year, the council approves an annual road program. This evening, we want to kind of introduce this topic, allow the council to have some preliminary input, and we'll ultimately come back to the council with the final list. So this evening, Mark O'Dravowski is here, and I didn't recognize you at first, Mark, but you're a high-paid consultant.
Clean up once in a while.
He cleans up really well.
Yeah. All right. Thank you, Mayor, counsel, Mr. Selby. Turned, I just want to present a short and sweet slideshow of what we've done in about the past two weeks. Every, our annual road program improvement project. So to begin, I just want to tell you a few interesting statistics. The City of Auburn is responsible for 94.15 centerline miles of roads, and also 195.3 lane miles of roads. So if you took the 195 lane miles, that distance would equate to, on the throughway from Utica to Buffalo. So it's, it's quite a length of streets that the city is required to maintain on an annual So moving along, the assessment process, we've, this year, we tried something new. We've had some new technology come up. In February, it actually came online using GIS software and an application for an iPad. So myself and another engineer, Scott McIntyre, we together drove every street in the city, and we do that every year. So we did use the app on the iPad. As I drove, Scott basically drew a coded line on the application, which we rated the streets as good, four, or, I'm sorry, good, fair, poor, and also failed. As I drove the road, I determined, just from experience, we determined the severity of the distresses in the road, whether it be potholes, cracking, alligator cracking, you've got other delaminations and just raveling. And so we take that into consideration as we rate them, and we also, one of the most important things is the rightability, how it affects the vehicle, how you feel as you drive down the road, which is also an anger factor. So, and as we drove through each street, if a street, you know, if we noticed any certain spots that required repairs, we noted, we had another field on the application where we could put a point and, that would require a patch, or if there was a catch basin that had failed, or manhole that was low. So we tried to pick up everything we could see. We can't pick up everything because there might be cars parked on the side of the road, or you just, you just miss it with traffic. It's, we drive about 20 to 25 miles an hour, and I'm sure we had some angry drivers behind us, but, so that's the, that's the process. So as we use the app, it automatically populates, the data goes directly to the internet and is stored in the cloud. So this morning, actually, I downloaded the map from the cloud and created that map that is currently on display, and in a matter of 15 minutes or so, normally, we did it on paper with colored markers, colored markers. So we would have to take those paper maps, draw the lines on the GIS software, and create, to create the map that you see over there, which is what we did the last two years. So it was, it was quite labor-intensive, it took probably two days to do that, and I did that in about 15 minutes. So using the new technology, it has saved us quite a bit of work. So the results, we determined that there were 44 street sections that have failed, 88 street sections rated as poor, 213 street sections rated as fair, and 220 rated as good. Surprisingly, there's, streets are better than most people think. The good rating, there's basically little distresses. These are mainly roads that have been paved within the last five years or so. Generally, no issues as you drive them, you don't even know, notice the road. The fair, there's some distresses, it's still a decent ride. The fair, there's some distresses, it's still a decent ride. There may be some points that need to be addressed, such as, you know, a pothole here and there. Well, like I said, we tried to note every one, and we can pass that list along to the DPW, and hopefully, they can take care of that with their new pothole killer. So, the poor rating, there's several distresses that might, like I said, might be alligators, cracking, delamination, several potholes. Ride quality is affected. Your vehicle will jostle, and, but, it's not bad enough with our budget to justify doing work when there's other streets that are rated as failed. The failed streets, it's rampant distress, poor ride quality, pavement longevity is short. So, it's just a matter of time where it'll pretty much be undrivable. So, like I said, a street may be perceived as failed due to an infrequent pothole. I know the general public, you know, oh, that street's terrible, there's a pothole over there, but in reality, yes, it's an inconvenience, but overall, the street is maybe fair or good. So, if we can zero in on and fix those points that, small sections that need to be addressed, then it would improve the ride quality for the public. So, this is the map that was generated, colored map. The green is good, the light green is fair, the orange is a, is poor, and the red is the failed streets. As you can see, we've got Franklin Street on there. And also notice that there's some yellow lines, which we've been in contact with near state electric and gas. Those are the projected work areas for 2014 and 2015. So, we're not going to touch anything on those roads until their work is complete for gas main work. I will try to, with this new application, we can make it public. I will try to work with the clerk to post this to our website, so the public can look at it. Just some pictures, just to give you an idea of some of the failed section. As you can see, this is the intersection of Canoga and Frazee Street. You can see the delamination. That's quite deep, actually. As you drive that, you cannot drive more than five miles an hour on that. So, it, just to give you a little idea, here's a, if you want to experience a failed street, drive down Center Street, that is, has been on our list for about several years now, and has reached the point where we need to do something with Center Street. Excuse me. As you can see, the several delaminations, which are quite deep, probably three inches or more, all the gravel that appears on the road, that is actually the road unraveling, the snow plows and the salt, and it's just, the asphalt binder that holds the asphalt together is oxidized, and it's no longer holding the asphalt together. So, the more traffic and snow plows that run on it, the road just ravels, unravels. And another terrible intersection is Washington Street and Union Street. Between the pavement failure and some utility work there, we definitely need to address that, especially with the bus route and whatnot. So, we're fighting a losing battle. Our 2013 work list totaled $7.7 million. We, last year, we performed $2.5 million in improvements from the $7.7 million list. So, in theory, the work left to be done, the balance should be $5.2 million. But in reality, the harsh winter has created increase in work that now totals $9.8 million. So, we really suffered, the roads really suffered this winter. And it shows, I'm sure the public agrees. So, I know our budget is tight. There was talk of dropping the bonding amount to $1.5 million. So, just to give you an idea, I, this is not a final list, but one I put together just to give you an idea of what $1.5 million will buy us. We were looking at probably 18 street sections. Those are the failed streets. And I did, just to spread the wealth, we, there wasn't really a lot of failed streets in the northeast section of the city. It's just an old tradition of spreading the wealth across each quadrant of the city, just so nobody feels left out. So, we could change this if you want to just attack the failed streets that need more attention. So, this list would give you, you know, about 18 street sections. If you were to, if you were to, yeah, go ahead.
How come the road program in 2013 seemed to be so, like, below what was, what you would have liked? What was, what happened in 2013 as far as, you made a proposal and there wasn't, what happened? There wasn't bonding for that money, or?
Yeah, I'm not real sure with the, who sets the bonding limits, or, you know, I mean, we're just kind of giving a number, and we try to shoot for it. But I do like to do a total work required number, just so we know what we're looking at. And, you know, if the funding's there, we can adjust. If not, then, well, we just have to suffer.
Counselor, I'd like to respond, and if I could, Mark, last year, you did, a lot of times when we approved the road program, a lot of money spent on curbing and other projects like on Seamer Street. You spent quite a bit of money on sewer, sewer line that went down Seamer Street, correct?
Storm sewer, yep.
So, a lot of monies are taken out of the road project to do projects like on Seamer Street, and money's diverted to different areas.
Right.
So, we got to make sure that we're being, we're telling what was spent. So, when we talk about spending money on roads, the money we're talking about spent on roads, but it's not spent on other items like curbing and sewer work, correct? We passed the overall road program in 2013.
Right.
You spent money on sewer work and on
Correct.
Quite a bit of.
But if we know there's an issue with the storm sewer, we're not going to just top the street and then come digging it up later.
No, I understand, but all the money is not spent on just the
Right, right, right.
Road program.
Right. We try to make the improvements that need to be done before we, you know, invest in the top layer and then come back and dig it up. So, as I do the final list, we've got a pretty good idea of, you know, we actually go out and try to inspect the catch basins and, you know, get a quantity on how many catch basins are just falling apart we need to replace. So, when I do my estimate, before I bring the final list to you, we've got a good handle on, okay, we're, with these improvements, whether it be catch basin, storm sewers, it's a pretty good number, so there's pretty much no hidden surprises. And actually, my estimates, not to brag, but they're pretty good. We've never, my estimate has been pretty much on the money, so when the bids come in, we're not short. I always put a little extra contingency money in there for unforeseen pride issues, such as, you know, you can't, you can't catch all the failed catch basins, so while we're out there in the field, we might see one, and, okay, we have to replace this, so.
Mark, that was one of the questions I was going to ask you. We did the sewer work on Seamer Street.
Yes.
And that money was taken out of the road project, correct?
Correct. That was storm sewer, so, I mean, I don't, there's really couldn't take it out of sewer fund, couldn't take it out of water fund, that's.
Just want to make sure that it was out of that program.
Yeah.
And what was that cost? Do you remember what that was?
It was, I'm thinking it was about $40,000. And that was, wasn't a lot of pipe. It was about 250 feet, 300 feet of pipe.
I have a quick question. Is the road program, well, when you do a street, is that the one where you send the letters to the residents and let them know if they're interested in curbs and all that? That's the same program? So, that curbing would be another issue? That you don't address curbing in the?
Yes, the, any homeowner purchase curbing that goes on the revolving loan fund, which comes out of that account. So, that's why we sometimes have a change order, because we need to add money to the contract to cover the homeowner installed, the homeowner paid for curbing.
Okay.
And like, it averages $100,000 to $150,000 per year.
And that helps keep the street, if everybody did participate. Is it curbing? I'm not an engineer, but it helps maintain the street more.
Right, it keeps the cars off the grass, it maintains, helps drainage, and it looks nice, too.
The curbing I'm talking about is what you did on city property.
Right.
Like around some of the parks and things like that.
Right. Sometimes we would transfer from the city sidewalk fund if there's balance. If not, and, like I said, we add it in. Handicap ramps also, that's on the city, so that's also included in the program. But that's, the handicap ramps and the city-owned curbing, that's, I factor that into my initial estimate.
Mark, two quick questions, as long as we're going this way. Can we make this list also available on our city's website? But would, one, understood that this isn't a guarantee that this street or this street is going to be repaired. This is what we're looking at in, working with Mr. Mason, if you would. And secondly, what do you, you keep talking about road section. What do you determine as a road section? What is your?
Well, it's, like Seymour Street, I'm, road section I might consider, you know, one block. So, the length varies. When talking about road sections, it's not the full street. There might be one street with, you know, 10 road sections.
Basically blocks?
Blocks or areas between blocks, short areas. We can, I do have the $9.8 million list, which is the complete, which everyone can look at.
Well, Christmas is coming sooner or later, but.
Right. But that'll definitely give the public an understanding that they might have to wait their turn. So, if we go to $2.5 million, that would allow us to get to 37 street sections. So, it's a little more than double. There might be some small sections on here, that's why the number is greater. The main thing is the, like in 2005, I believe the funding was $1.4 million, and they were able to do 32 street sections. So, the main reason for less work at the same cost, or more cost, is the material, material prices such as asphalt. The price of asphalt has doubled since 2005, so inflation on, when you're talking asphalt, is outrageous. So, we may need to invest a little more in preventative maintenance. We do, of the 2.5, we do take, set aside roughly $50,000 to crack seal. And like I said, as we drove the streets, we're marking what streets need crack sealing, which streets need to be, you know, milled and repaved with top, or which streets need a binder and top. So, we're, we've got a pretty good handle on what needs to be done now. So, just to, maybe a little, some of the streets which are in decent shape, such as, like Heard Circle, it's, the asphalt's oxidizing. So, like I said, it's wearing, the sun is wearing away the asphalt, but to save it, you know, there's, I think they've tried in the past, we could slurry seal that street and get probably another 10 years out of it before we have to touch it again. But if we don't, then it's going to, the degradation will increase, and we'll be repaving it within five years. So, I think we need to try, I know it's going to be tough to convince Mr. Lupien, but I think we need to try a slurry seal just to save some of these streets from a quick degradation. Some other, like I said, some other work, we've got crack sealing. Casey Park parking lot by the ice rink, that is in terrible condition. Then we also have, we set aside $250,000 of the 1.5 or the 2.5 for these programs. The small repairs might be, you know, an odd patch here and there. We might have a homeowner that, or a street that has a drainage issue. We might use the county bid pricing or the contractor for county bid to install a catch basin or do some small work. It's quite handy to have that county bid contractor available. And we also have three streets left over from last year that need to be finished soon. One of them, I'm sure the public will be happy, Standard Ave, Grand Ave to North Lewis Street. And we've got Boston Ave from Peacock to North Fulton. And West Park Ave, there's some, a huge patch, a couple of huge patches that need to be done. But like I said, overall, the street is in decent condition. There's just like two utility patches that are atrocious. So, that's just to update you on leftovers. Also, some, I didn't have it on the slide, some upcoming projects. Everyone's happy to hear that South Street will, is out to bid right now. That should be starting soon, once the bids come back and you go through the process. It should be starting this summer with the repaving from Lincoln Street to Metcalf Drive. Walnut Street Culvert, they are working on the final drawings to submit to the state. They should have them completed, I think, next week. So, once that project, once this DOT approves the drawings, we should have that project out to bid as soon. Further down in the queue, we have North Division Street Bridge. That's going to be a full replacement, realignment. That's quite a, quite a project, over three and a half million dollar estimate. That should be, clean up that whole area of state, or North Division and Clark Street. Even further down the road, maybe a year, I think it's 2015 they're shooting for, West Genesee Street Preservation, which is basically, we're going to mill an inch and a half or more, depending on the conditions, from the city line to William Street, even though that was just reconstructed, but it rated highly on the, when we applied for the initial project proposal, proposal with the DOT. So, we did get awarded that. Even further, further out, we were awarded Lake Avenue Preservation Project also, which is from Swift Street to the city line towards the high school. Like I said, right now, it's not, it's drivable, but it's starting to fail. So, by the time we get the process through, it should be right on time for a repave. One final thing, North Street, that is, the city's responsible for the first one inch, and as you know, we are beyond that. So, we have been in contact, I think Mr. Lupien has been in contact with the DOT to try to push them to repave North Street, but I'm asking you, politicians, maybe you can push some legislators at the state level to bring that up on the state's queue, because North Street is terrible condition. Any other questions?
Counselor. Mark, you were talking, last year, we did some patching, you know, some substantial patching through the city. I think that's what we used quite a bit of money to. Do you have any of that planned for this year?
I really didn't, because I'm thinking, hopefully, that pothole killer could take care of a lot of it. To be honest with you, I don't know if it was, it was worth the investment, but I don't think it's money well-spent, just because there's so, we didn't get a lot done. We only did a quarter of the city with the $250,000. So, it's, it was quite costly. It did improve considerably some, you know, bad sections, but I don't know, at this point, we weren't planning on doing another one, but we can look into that if necessary. It was, it was a lot of work. We had, I was basically full-time on the patch project, and Scott McIntyre was basically full-time on the road program, and I was jumping back and forth. So, we were, it was quite a bit, quite a bit of work, which is what we're here for. But, like I said, it was a tough, it was a tough project. I think you might be better off taking the $250,000 and maybe buying a pothole patcher. Really, I mean, just to, so we, you can have a full-time person just attacking the, we could cover more ground, I think. It's a thought.
If we did a better job with our excavations in our streets, as you just pointed out on Washington Street, the excavations that were done, we're just trying to play catch-up. And no matter how much money we spend, we're not doing a good job with the excavations or making a contract. or making a contractor, who are doing the excavations in the street do the proper job. And I went and looked at our city code, because if I can, I'd just like to talk about this for a moment. It's our city code, it specifically talks about excavations in the street, something that I've been asking about for two years, that we follow up on this. Our streets wouldn't be in the condition they're in right now if we didn't have problems with a lot of the excavations that should be followed up on. And it says under excavations in our city code, unless acting under a contract with the city, it shall be unlawful for any person or other than duly authorized city official or employee in the course of his or her employment to make or cause or permit to be made any excavation or opening in or under any sidewalk or under the pavement of city street, so on and so forth. And it went on to say that there was a provision, something that we talked about last week, that a permit shall be not be required in case of an emergency arising from an office hours at night on Saturdays, Sundays, or legal holidays, when an immediate excavation must be made, provided however that the application for permit shall be made in the manner herein provided within the next business day. It also goes on to say, any person desiring to procure a permit shall provide the Superintendent of Engineering Services at least 24 hours before the time proposed to begin such work a written application stating all the work they're, they're gonna be doing. It goes on to say, the authority of the Superintendent of Engineering shall have full authority and power at any time to rescind or alter any such permit or any of the terms thereof to direct the manner in which the work shall be conducted. The Superintendent of Engineering Services with the approval of the Corporation Council shall be and is hereby authorized to revise the terms and conditions of permits issued for excavations in order to protect the city's interest during the period of construction. In all excavations, the worrying surface shall be relayed by the city, which I didn't know about, under the direction of the Superintendent of Engineering Services. Such relaying so consistent, and it goes on to say what proper materials shall be used. The rate for the replacement of permanent pavement over excavations made in city streets by property owners and utilities shall be fixed by resolution of this city council, that's us. In the case of public utilities, companies having a franchise to operate through the city's streets, a bond shall be approved by the Superintendent of Engineering Services. So all these things that we talked about last night are laid out in the code. It's, it's not that hard. There should be bonds in place for utility companies. We should be doing the work, it should be done to however the code specifies it. So there it is, it's very simple, it's very, it's right in the code, something we should be following. And unfortunately, we wouldn't have some of these problems we're facing right now and spending money to follow up on poor excavations.
I agree 100%.
Does that have anything to do with, and I don't mean to say that we don't have enough people, but staffing? I mean, I know, I've worked at City Hall, and you just mentioned last year, who does the follow-up and who does go out and check these things?
Usually the plumbing inspector.
Is the plumbing?
Is required, any, like sewer lateral. It would just be the sewer laterals because the city does the water services.
For utilities, though, if?
Utility, it's difficult, because we have asked NISEG to contact us whenever they're working, so we can document it and track it, in case there is a problem. We can tell them to come back and fix it, but they haven't been too successful in contacting us. So I know Bill has, Lupien has been in contact with NISEG to try to remedy that.
Aren't they working on Genesee Street now?
Yes.
Do they have a bond in place?
That I don't know.
It states right here in the code that one should be provided and on file. So however it needs to get done, it needs to happen, because we're just, on one street I just looked at, we spent a lot of money last year on the road program, there's two excavations that are horrible, that have just been done.
Yeah.
I went out and looked at.
Seymour Street was one of them.
Right. I went out and pulled the bond resolutions, and we haven't even paid the bonds on some of these streets, and they're not in good shape. So.
Yeah, I, I disagree with the city's policy on having plumbers dig in the streets. It's, we just lose control, like during our tour of the city, when we were assessing the streets, it was like a free-for-all out there. We saw plumbers, drain layers everywhere. I mean, it's just digging in the street and nobody around to watch them. I mean, it was, I think that needs to be looked at seriously, that policy of letting.
Well, they're supposed to have an application, and if they don't, they should be stopped from doing the work.
And also, we need to look at our own crews, compaction, 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 and the method of leaving stone exposed all winter. I know it's difficult, but there's still cold patch available. I've seen it in the summer, also stone all over the place. It's a dangerous condition, especially if you're on a motorcycle, you hit that stone, you're going down. But that needs to be addressed also.
Well, especially to people that, that all gets plowed on to their right-of-way, and they're all mowing grass and.
Right. Believe me, nobody has more care for these streets than me, because I spent all summer doing them, and I treat them like my son. And when I see somebody come in and dig them up, it hurts.
I believe him.
Especially after we spent a lot of money, but.
Exactly.
Do you think this needs more, how can the city provide more oversight? What do you, what kinds of things can be done in the future so that we, we're actually basically helping follow-through happen? I mean, that's really the case, there's no follow-through. And what needs to happen is that there needs to be follow-through, and we need to put those, put those stop guards in place. Mark, how, could there be some, either a position or something where we can, we can look at quality control when it comes to our streets in Auburn?
I think what actually may be happening, good timing, is the implementation of the view permit software, where we can require the permits for excavation, you know, and we wouldn't be able to track who gets them, and we would, the permits would be available in the field on a tablet. So if, as we're driving by, we see something, we could pull out a tablet and say, alright, this guy doesn't have a permit, and then we could, you know, contact the proper authority or shut them down or whatever. And we'd also be able to track the performance of the repair. I mean, we may, I mean, I know Rochester, they, they require a deposit if you're doing an excavation permit, and it's not cheap either. So either bonding or deposits or something, or.
I like that idea. I mean, that, that way, it's, there's money in hand, and who knows who's, who has a bond and who doesn't? I mean, there's no.
Right.
There's no, again, there's no, no follow-through, which there should be. I mean, if it's in, if it's in our code, it definitely should be, you know, overseen. And right now, it seems like your crew is busy doing the work, but there's no one doing the oversight. So I, I'm in favor of, of looking for some, some more oversight as, as time moves on. We, we definitely need that.
Mr. Selby, we have a lot of vehicles on the road daily, police, fire, DPW, engineering, everyone's on the road. Maybe we could come up with a system, where there is a road cut being done, they can get it back and get it, I don't know how, what the format would be, but get it into the computer so we can track that. You know, we have vehicles on the road continuously, and it only takes a few seconds to get the word out, and then we, that would add in, lend in to what Counselor Cuddy and everyone else is talking about, so.
Yep. But even, you know, even if they did have a permit, you know, we just don't have the staff to go out and inspect them all, especially during the backfilling stage, which is the most important, you know? A lot of these contractors, even our own guys, just back the truck up, dump the whole truck, fill the whole hole with stone and drive away. There's no compaction. You come back two weeks later, it settles six inches. I mean, it's.
Well, Mark, we're in the budget process right now, and we're gonna have to find somebody to do that, because we can't afford, this is just, we're just wasting money here, is what we're spending money on, and chasing things down, haven't done, been done right to begin with. So we're gonna have to find that if there's not somebody to do it.
Right.
It'd almost be a money saver.
Absolutely.
By bringing an employee on them, then bonding for road repairs that are not necessary.
Right.
It probably wouldn't take long before people got the idea that they need to get the permit after that.
I just think we need more, more teeth in the, to make it worse something, so they do the job properly.
There's teeth in the code, we gotta follow it, and then we're not following the code.
Right.
What's that, Mark?
Anything else?
Thank you.
Thanks, Mark.
Hey, you're welcome.
Could you just get us copies of the streets that you had proposed?
Yes.
Do we vote on those, or they just, that's what it is? We don't have to vote, do we? Oh, we do eventually?
You will later.
Okay.
We're gonna have the bonding amount, and then I'll be able to do the estimate, is that what we're shooting for?
I think so.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
None.
Mr. Selby, City Manager's Report.
A few items from here. One, the last meeting, I reported that NISEG was planning to shut down our COGEN operation on April 21st, and that would have had some significant negative impacts to us, because it would have been for a three-week duration. Since then, I've been in touch with them, they've come up with an alternative plan that only requires us to be out of service for about one week, which is a big improvement. And so what we're looking at doing during that one-week period is doing some engine maintenance, that's going to have to be done sooner or later, and doing some substantial work on the gas collection system at the landfill, which is a project that's been recognized as being needed, and to do that, we would have had to shut down the COGEN system. So what we want to do is rush that project through design and construction so that we can get that done. Those two projects together, the maintenance on the engines and the shutdown, or the installation of the new gas piping, would actually allow us to take advantage of this one-week shutdown. So that's a bit of good news. On the water meter replacement program, we met with the contractor this afternoon, Vicki Murphy, both Vicki Murphys and I. The hold harmless provision whereby a property owner could choose to allow an installation of a meter in a location that otherwise they're, the installer might be concerned about, that's been in the field for several days now. So people who want to accept the possible risk of a leak or some kind of negative consequences from installing a meter on a deteriorated service system, they can acknowledge that, meter can be installed. The contractor will take proper care, not to be reckless, but there's always a chance that there, there could be a problem. So that, that's one avenue.
Doug, before you move on, if somebody wanted to do that, they would contact in-line to have them come back and put the meter in and sign the waiver?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
Good.
We also have, as of today, two-thirds of the meters in the program have been successfully replaced. The number of non-responders since the newspaper called attention to this issue has dropped from 1,500 to 1,000. I've asked the contractor to also get a couple more newspaper ads, week, you know, apart. So we'll publicize it that way, we're looking at some radio spots and possibly a TV, a little short TV blurb that the council suggested at our last meeting. So make an additional effort to communicate the program, try to get that last 1,000 people to respond. There's still likely a need to have some kind of a penalty or surcharge, but before we bring that back to the council, we want to do these other activities. There was also, unfortunately, the release of a list of services that were of questionable value, that should have never been released to the public. It was released to one plumber. Since that was released, other plumbers have complained that they didn't get that list. Homeowners have complained that they're being marketed by plumbers. So we've looked at that. I think our only recourse is to allow the other plumbers to have the list, but also, at the same time, notify all the homeowners on the list that the city is not saying that just because you're on the list, you need your service lateral replaced, and we're not endorsing any particular plumber, and we're telling the plumbers, don't use this as a tool to market.
Excuse me, Doug, did?
Yes.
I gotta make sure I understood. There was a list of people who, citizens, residences, was given to a plumber?
A list of properties where the service, the meter wasn't installed because of a questionable service.
No.
So it could have needed a line, right? Could have needed a water.
It could need a service lateral, or it could just need some extra care on the installation. For example, a curb stop might need to be shut off outside, which is something the city would have to do.
How would that get out to, do we want to know?
It's been dealt with as a personnel matter.
Oh, I hope so. Oh, my God.
All we can do at this point with that is damage control.
Yeah.
And lastly, this week, the Headworks analysis report was released. If you recall, the council lifted the moratorium on taking gas well water, but at that point in time, the DEC had said, well, if you want to consider taking it again, you've got to do this one-year analysis of what's coming into the treatment plant and its capabilities to take a new, to take on that kind of wastewater. That Headworks analysis is something that's done every five years anyway. So this time, when it was done, it was amended to include a look at taking gas well drilling water. That required some supplemental testing and analysis. So what the report concluded, and it's a very technical report, I can make it available to everybody, but basically concluded with regard to the gas well drilling water, that the city waste stream that comes into the plant already has an elevated level of something called chloride in it, and that's the same thing as table salt, sodium chloride, it's chloride. Comes from some of our existing dischargers, but it's a big constituent also in gas well drilling water. So the consultants that prepared the report said that if we took the gas well drilling water with the chlorides that are in that, in addition to what we already have, that it could have a negative effect on our biological process that converts ammonia to an inert form before discharge to the U.S. outlet. There is a possibility of doing what's called a nitrification inhibition study to determine at what level our plant really is negatively impacted by chloride levels. But at this point, we don't, as staff, we wouldn't necessarily recommend that for several reasons. One, it's expensive, the outcome is uncertain. Two, the regulatory climate is very difficult right now, and even with such a study, it may be unlikely to get a permit. And third, during the moratorium period of over a year now, those gas well operators have found other avenues to dispose of their gas well drilling water, and we don't know if they would ever come back to us. So I would say, at this point, your staff considers this to be kind of the conclusion of that effort to look at taking gas well drilling water back into the city's system. And that's all I have.
Thank you. Seeker Resolutions?
None.
We have four bond ordinances for the first reading. Counsel, would your approval like to streamline that, just the pertinent, whatever plate would be good, if you wouldn't mind? If that's all right, Mr. Rossi?
Yeah, it'd be the pertinent sections of purpose for which the bonds are being sold. Generally, the, I guess, the life of the improvement in the final section.
Does it have to be unanimous? Does it have to be unanimous?
We can read the entire form, Counsel.
I've already got the.
We never put you through that, so.
Oh, yes, they did.
I've already got the markup done.
You got it.
Bond Ordinance Number Three, authorizing issuance of $5.650 million in serial bonds to finance the costs of various transportation capital projects.
That's right.
For our first reading.
Sure. Bond Ordinance Number Three of 2014, be ordained by the Council of the City of Auburn, New York as follows. Section One, the city is hereby authorized to undertake the various transportation capital projects described below. Each, a project at an aggregate estimated maximum cost of $5,650,000. The estimated maximum cost of each project being as follows. A Walnut South Street Improvement Project. The reconstruction and resurfacing of Walnut and South Streets, including culverts, sidewalks, curbs, gutters, drainage, landscaping, and grading or improving the rights of way, with a pavement which will be more durable construction than pavement of sand and gravel, water-bound macadam, or. macadam or penetration process with single-surface treatment, at an estimated maximum cost not to exceed $4,843,000. And B, Traffic Signal System. The purchase and installation of various traffic signals, traffic signs, and traffic signal systems at various locations throughout the city, at an estimated maximum cost not to exceed $807,000. Section two, the plan for financing such estimated maximum cost shall be the issuance of $5,650,000 in serial bonds of the city, which are hereby authorized to be issued pursuant to this ordinance. Section three, it is hereby determined that the period of probable usefulness of the aforementioned specific objects or purposes pursuant to paragraph four of section 11A of the local finance law are as follows. The Walnut and South Street Improvement Project, probable usefulness period of 15 years. And the Traffic Signal System, probable usefulness of 20 years. The city hereby determines that the provisions of the State Environmental Quality Review Act and the regulations thereunder have been previously satisfied with respect to the expenditures authorized by this ordinance. This ordinance shall take effect immediately upon its adoption. And that's for next week's agenda, and the seeker ordinance will be on as well next week for that one.
Bond ordinance number four of 2014, authorizing issuance of $1.5 million in serial bonds to finance the cost of the 2014-15 Road Improvement Program.
Bond ordinance number four of 2014, be it ordained by Council of the City of Auburn, New York as follows. Section one, the City of Auburn, New York is hereby authorized to undertake the reconstruction and resurfacing of various city streets and roads, including sidewalks, curbs, gutters, drainage, landscaping, and grading or improving the rights of way, with a pavement which will be more durable construction than pavement of sand and gravel, water-bound macadam or penetration process with single-surface treatment, at an estimated maximum cost of $1,500,000, and to issue an aggregate $1,500,000 in serial bonds pursuant to the provisions of the local finance law to finance the estimated cost of the aforementioned project or purpose. Section two, it is hereby determined that the maximum estimated cost of the aforementioned specific object or purpose is $1,500,000. Said amount is hereby appropriated, therefore, and the plan for the financing thereof shall consist of the issuance of $1,500,000 in serial bonds of the city authorized to be issued pursuant to this ordinance. It is hereby determined that the period of probable usefulness of the aforementioned specific object or purpose is 15 years pursuant to paragraph 20C of section 11A of the local finance law. Council hereby determines that the provisions of the State Environmental Quality Review Act and the regulations thereunder have previously been satisfied with respect to the expenditures authorized by this ordinance. The ordinance shall take effect immediately upon its adoption, and that's also for next week with the seeker will be on next week as well.
Counselor Cuddy?
I just want to know the appropriateness of whether or not we can talk between readings, or wait till all the readings are done, or what, is there a protocol as to what the council can, when and when the council cannot talk?
I think in order to get through that, let's get the ordinances read and then come back.
And we can talk about the content? Okay, great.
We can all tell the second reading.
Okay, okay, great, thank you.
Bond ordinance number five, authorizing issuance of $790,000 in serial bonds to finance the cost of the purchase of equipment for maintaining city improvements.
Bond ordinance number five of 2014, be it ordained by the Council of the City of Auburn, New York as follows. The City of Auburn, New York is hereby authorized to undertake the purchase of equipment to be used for constructing, reconstructing, repairing, or maintaining city improvements, the cost of which is $30,000 or more, including two six-wheel dump trucks with plow and wings, two one-ton pickup trucks with plow and salt spreader, and two solid waste refuse packers for the City Department of Public Works, at an estimated maximum cost of $790,000, and to issue an aggregate $790,000 in serial bonds pursuant to the provisions of the local finance law to finance the estimated costs of the aforementioned object or purpose. It is hereby determined that the maximum estimated cost of the aforementioned object or purpose is $790,000. Said amount is hereby appropriated, therefore, and the plan for the financing thereof shall consist of the issue of $790,000 in serial bonds of the city authorized to be issued pursuant to this ordinance. It is hereby determined that the period of probable usefulness of the aforementioned specific object or purpose is 15 years pursuant to paragraph 28 of section 11A of the local finance law. The council hereby determines that the provisions of the State Environmental Quality Review Act and the regulations thereunder have been previously satisfied with respect to the expenditures authorized by this ordinance. The ordinance shall take effect immediately upon its adoption. Again, for next week, Mayor.
First reading, bond ordinance number six of 2014. We have a little typo on our numbers there. Authorizing issuance of $785,000 serial bonds to finance the cost of building improvements in and for the city.
Bond ordinance number six of 2014, be it ordained by Council of the City of Auburn, New York as follows. The City of Auburn, New York is hereby authorized to undertake the renovation and reconstruction of various city-owned buildings, whether or not including grading or equipment, or grading or improvement of the site's original furnishings, equipment, machinery, or apparatus required for the purposes for which such buildings are to be used at an estimated maximum cost of $785,000, and to issue an aggregate $785,000 in serial bonds pursuant to the provisions of the local finance law to finance the estimated cost of the aforementioned object or purpose. It is hereby determined that the maximum estimated cost of the aforementioned specific object or purpose is $785,000. Said amount is hereby appropriated, therefore, and the plan for the financing thereof shall consist of the issuance of $785,000 in serial bonds of the city authorized to be issued pursuant to this ordinance. It is hereby determined that the period of probable usefulness of the aforementioned specific object or purpose is 25 years pursuant to paragraph 12A1 of section 11A of the local finance law. The council hereby determines that the provisions of the State Environmental Quality Review Act and the regulations thereunder have previously been satisfied with respect to the expenditures authorized by this ordinance, and the ordinance shall take effect immediately upon its adoption.
Counselor Cuddy? Mr. Rossi?
Hey, just to interrupt, just to announce that all of these ordinances are on file with the city clerk, and if anyone wants to review them, they should go to the city clerk's office.
Thank you.
I'm just gonna ask a few questions. Mark, you were up here discussing the, the road program, which is the number four, and like 1.5 million was like the low estimate? Is this, is this, is this what you're asking for? There's, is there another one for next year, or is, is there like what you're? I'm interested to see, to see your...
I, I'm not, I don't set the bond amount.
Okay.
I mean, I'd love to do $10 million worth of roads, trust me, but...
Well, we can't afford that.
Can't do that, so it's...
But this is like the minimum, this is like...
Bare minimum.
Bare minimum.
I mean, you're still gonna have some bad streets out there.
And you had one slide that showed that, I don't know, can you put, can you bring the slideshow back up again? There was one slide that showed the road worked on in 2013. And, okay, and 7.7 million. And then the reality, and again, everyone knows how harsh of a winter it is, and, you know, I'm, especially now that the spring has come, I am getting phone calls more so now about the potholes. So the reality is, is that seems like the work list is increasing every year that we seem to do the bare minimum. And I'm, you know, I just wanted to bring that up to council to try to, again, consider, we're thinking long-term when it comes to our roads, thinking long-term when it comes to our infrastructure, giving the staff the, the kind of, with, give them the, I guess, the tools that they need to make sure that the city is functioning the way it should. And, you know, I'm, I'm interested in, I know, that's why I was, was interested that it was for 1.5 million. I think that's very, you know, considerate of your, you know, understanding the, where we are as far as budget and as a city. But also, I, I just want to bring it forth to our council that we may want to consider, instead of having that number at the bottom increase every year, that we're not addressing the structural issues, to maybe, to maybe address that when we, when we are considering bonding.
Is it, I have a question related to, is it safe to say that, that the things that have doubled in price, if you did more now, I mean, it continues to go up like everything else, is it, is more now saving money for taxpayers in the long run?
Yeah, definitely.
In a way?
What, if we do a $1.5 million project, we may adjust, we may have to adjust, just to make streets drivable, the procedure, the work procedure we do. So what we've done in the past, when we're tight on money, instead of milling and putting streets that are in terrible shape, instead of milling, putting a two-and-a-half inches of binder course and then an inch of top course on, we may have to go back and just mill an inch and a half and put an inch and a half, what we call it as lipstick, which is more of a temporary fix. It's, it doesn't allow you the longevity. With the two-and-a-half million dollar project, for the last two years, we put a lot of binder down, and it, and it, we did one street when I first started here in 2008, which is Francis Street, between South Seward and Anna Street. We put binder on that street. There's just one crack down the center. So the binder works. So you're, you're able to increase your longevity by investing a little more thickness in asphalt. So the extra money would allow us to more rehabilitate the street than just make it temporarily drivable.
And is it, aren't winters, I'm not a climate person, but they say that winter, the climate and the winters aren't going to get warmer, and I would expect that the same winter we had now isn't going to be less, much less, next time. That's another consideration I just thought I'd throw out there.
Right, right.
Mr. Selby and Mr. Rossi, I'm gonna toss this one to you. I, I think what I'm reading from Counselor Cuddy, and correct me if I'm wrong, we went through this a few weeks ago, can we amend the resolution to increase the amount on the fly?
Yes. There are very few things you can amend on a bond, but the amount is one of them.
Okay. So I, is it, Counselor, I'm not reading into it, but I, this is what I'm interpreting from you, and that's what I was wondering.
I saw a discrepancy in the PowerPoint, and I, and like, I just, I thought there'd be like maybe a middle number, two, but it was like you were erring on the lower side. I just wanted to just make sure that that was what you were actually doing, and I just wanted to consider maybe that as an option, and as a council, to consider that with, with this bond. The, I guess, does anyone else have any other?
Just that if we did, we, if we would consider it, if what the impact would be, ask the comptroller, get some information if we did.
If we increased...
If we did.
If we did. What that would, what that would do? Counselor McCormick is asking...
If we increased the, the amount for the road program from 1.5 above that in any way, shape, or form, what is that, what will that do to everybody, anything? Drew, is it possible to do that? I mean, I know it is, but is it a good idea?
We, we've scheduled out the debt for the next couple of years, and that's something we can, not the next couple of years, over the life of the debt. That's something that we'll definitely be sharing with you. And the more debt you add on, the more debt payments you're gonna have. So you have to think about whether you're willing to pass those debt payments along to the taxpayers in the next couple of years, and also the interest that goes along with that.
It's a weighing whether you want your roads, you gotta, you know, I know what you're saying. Okay, thanks.
Laura, without too much trouble, could you work up a couple scenarios? We already had, we will have the 1.5, but if we increase it by, to 2 million and maybe 2.5, just what the long-term effects would be financially on the city and, you know what I'm trying to say?
Yeah, you want that for next week?
If these, if this is going to be on next week's agenda, we're probably going to need it, so, or during the week, you could email it out, it'd be great. Okay?
Thank you.
Fair enough, Counsel.
I have a few more things. I, I'm, Counselor McCormick and I are still new here, I mean, it's safe to say that. And I'm interested in the, in the, I know that the last bond, it was, there was a lot of back and forth between the first bond ordinance of 2014, and if I could ask Christina Selvick to come forward to just maybe talk about what the process, once the council approves the bond, just so that I know, like, you know, and when is this work supposed to get, I don't know, Mark, Mark can answer that too, but let's, if you can go over the process of the, how, once we approve a bond like we did for the, for the last bond, what happens, and how long do things take, and just so that we know that we can get all this work done in the time that we, we need to get it done.
Sure. Good evening, Mayor and Council. So our city bonding process, as you know, staff comes to you well in advance of issuing bond ordinances, what those projects are for, what we'll be using those bond proceeds for. So on the night of adopting a bond ordinance, when that is passed, the very next day, staff goes to the city clerk, and there's a notice that's issued called an estoppel notice. It's our formal notice to the public, letting them know that the city's gonna be issuing bonds in this amount. That actually goes out for, I believe, I don't know, help me with that, Chuck, maybe 10, it's gotta be out for 20 days? So 10 or 20. And so we need to have that out to the public, then it goes to the county clerk's office, they issue a formal affidavit for the estoppel notice, that comes back to us, and that's for our use for bond council and for issuing the formal bonds. So we need that to go to bond sale. We have to have completed that process. So for example, the four that are before you this evening, and then for adoption for next week's meeting. So that'll be May 1st for adoption for the four. If those are adopted in some form or fashion, the estoppel notice would go to the clerk's office, that would need to be out for the 10 or 20 days. From there, then, we're looking at, so we have to issue a full notice for bond sale by May 8th. So that would be one week from your adoption. After that, then all the statements are printed, and we then let people that are interested in purchasing our bonds know that they're out for sale. May 20th, right now, is our scheduled sale date for selling our bonds, bonds or bands. At that point, then, the statements, the official statements are mailed, and then, once we know how much, at what interest rate the bonds were sold for, the clerk and then the comptroller get together, you know, May 21st to the 23rd, depending upon the sale and the notice, go through all the paperwork with our chief financial advisors and our bond council, and then generally, the proceeds of those sales are delivered back to the city by the end of May. So there's still, after May 1st, we still have a whole month of work just to make sure that the proceeds from the bond ordinance then are here, and then we can use them for projects.
And once the end of May hits, do, can we, are we shovel-ready and ready to go? If, if we vote on it May 1st? And if we vote, if we say, vote yes, May 1st, all this work, the estoppel notice, the 10 to 20 days, goes to county clerk's office, back to bond council, then the bond sale happens? That's one month? Then can we, then can we get to work?
In my professional opinion, I would always like to make sure that there's funds in a capital account when you're awarding anything for a contractor, so, which... a capital account when you're awarding anything for a contractor, so at which point, when we're gonna be doing awards for South Street, Walnut Street, the traffic signals, you know, everything that's coming up for road program, you know, that cash needs to be there because, you know, engineering and other department staff are really quick about turning around those award notices, and, you know, those purchase orders go into the municipal system, sometimes almost the very next day on that Friday, and they get kicked back if there's not sufficient funds in the accounts. So that's our safeguard, to make sure that there's cash in the accounts. So we would be holding up project work if there were not funds, sufficient funds in those accounts to pay the contractors.
Counsel.
We, before you do that, though, in between the bond vote and the go-to bid, council still votes on a lot of different things that have to do with those projects, correct?
You, sometimes in between, getting the authorization right, so we'll come to you, and, you know, we're asking for permission to go out to bid for this project, we would then open up bids, but in theory, there should be cash in the account by the time that you're making the award to a contractor.
May I ask, we passed a bond ordinance a few weeks ago, where are we in that process? Is the estoppel notice, or how many, has it gone to the county clerk's office yet? Where are we in that process?
So the estoppel notice is out to the public, I believe it should be at the county clerk's office very shortly, we're waiting for that affidavit, I was hoping to have it this week, and I don't have that as of yet. The affidavit, like I said, closes your bond ordinance process, and that's needed, at least in the case for state funding, they need the affidavit with the bond ordinance to complete your funding applications.
Okay, and so, again, I just want to, we see the amount of work that, that needs to be done to, to make sure our roads are as, as workable and, and as, as, I guess, strong as they can be, we have the road program, these, all of these bond ordinances are in the capital improvement plan, and I really hope that the council can come together to see what needs to be done to, to, to help not only our streets, but our buildings, and that we can really, I guess, show the people of Auburn that see the, the roads in disrepair, show that, show them that this council can come together and, and repair our roads, make this area attractive, have the infrastructure there for the kind of traffic we're hoping for as we transform our, our city into a destination. So I, I just want to thank the, the staff for giving us a humble, yet, you know, a timely proposal. We do have to consider the timeline as we move forward so that our workers can get to work, and we, the people of Auburn can see that, that we are looking out for the best interests of the city and getting this work done. Thank you.
Thank you.
Counsel.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Counselor, you talk about tools, and I agree with you that we need to give our workers the tools, but we have given them the tools, and it's called following the code, and being accountable to not only the city council, to the manager, and to the taxpayers of this community. If we're following the code, we wouldn't have, be having so many problems in our roads, unfortunately. I want to talk about the debt that we're incurring and gonna be incurring, and I understand that some of this infrastructure needs to happen, and I know it should happen. We're looking at $8.7 million in new debt that we're gonna be adding on to the debt of the taxpayers of this community, on top of the $70 million that we're indebtedness already. Doug, I guess you or the comptroller, either one, is there debt coming off the books that is gonna help us pay for some of this new debt? And some of this new debt is gonna be coming on to 2039. I don't know if any of us will be on the council on 2039, maybe, but I don't think so, but that's a long time to be indebted in the city for all this amount of debt, so I'd like to know how we're gonna pay for it, I just have some questions on that, and if that's coming off the books that we're replacing new debt with, can you give us some information on that, or somebody?
Laura, you can come up. I, I'm not sure what's coming off the books in the near future, but obviously, you look at this list, and it's kind of a situation where we can't not do it.
Yeah.
It's not my question, I'm questioning how we're gonna pay for it, is my point, so if you could...
We do have some debt coming off this year and next year with the reimbursements from the federal and Marge's Elliott, so that'll lower our debt. There's also 2.7 in that first 5 million bond reading that will be reimbursed, and then we'll pay down the debt with that as soon as we get that money, but we need that money for cash flow, because we don't have the extra 2 million just sitting around to fund the project until we get reimbursed for it.
I want you to listen, go ahead, I'm sorry.
There's also going to be other debt coming off the books, a, off the top of my head, I think it's 2018, but again, I, like I said, I have a schedule of all the debt in the general fund that I will be providing to the council.
Can you get that to us? I'd like to see it if possible, please. And that's another thing I was gonna be talking about, is, now, before we go on and float a bond, I see we have some reimbursement money that's coming in, so hopefully we'll be working on bands, bands is temporary financing to the city, so that we don't have to float the bonds for the full amount, because we got reimbursements coming in from state aid and federal aid and so on and so forth, so...
Correct. We will be using bands currently as long as possible, because the interest rate is so much better for the short term versus the long-term debt, so we'll be using the bands for their full five-year term unless the interest rates change significantly.
So that means we gotta stand top of our department heads to get all the information that they need into the state so that we can get that financing back, correct?
Correct.
Good. Thank you.
I just, well, also want to say, you know, these are long-term projects, long-term funding needs to happen. I mean, I know we may not be here in, you know, 2039, but the reality is, is like, I don't want to have a legacy where our children, grandchildren look back and say, why, you know, how come these roads aren't, you know, or the water supply or, or the pipes. I really want to have a legacy where this is a council that, you know, look for the future. You look, one of my colleagues was here a few weeks ago and talked about, you know, the new deal, and many of the buildings that were built in this, in this city were built during the, during the depression, and the depression was the worst of economic times for this country. What I want to do is, I know that, you know, times are tough, but if we can borrow at low-interest loans to, to, to enhance our infrastructure and do what we need to do as a council, I recommend that we do that. And I know, I understand, Counsel Camato, and I agree with you, that, that, you know, some may perceive this as a burden to the future generations, but I also see it as, you know, investing in our infrastructure for future generations, and who knows, they may even, you know, thank us for the kinds of work that we've done now to, to make sure and maintain our roads, our streets, and our water infrastructure, and I, I know times are tough, but I really want to give the, I guess, our staff and the people of Auburn, what we as a council think is, is the best for, for the city, and, and, you know, our city managers, Doug Selby, again, this is part of the capital improvement plan, it's, it's a plan, it's, it's, I just, I really think this would be an opportunity to, to give the, as, as you had mentioned, quoted me, the tools of our, of our staff to show the people of Auburn that we are willing to invest in their future and the future in this area in general. So that's my position.
Counselor, I want to have a good legacy also, I want to have a legacy that we can leave a good, well-thought-out plan to our future generations that was paid for in a way that we can afford to pay for it. We can take on some of these projects in a way that we can afford to pay for them, and we're not leaving a bankrupt city to our future generations. I hope that doesn't happen, I'm, that's why I'm very cautious in our financial spending here. I hope that we can leave a better city than when we came on as council. We all have that determination to do that, but we need to do it in a way where we can afford to do it, we can invest in our infrastructure in an affordable amount, and we leave a legacy where the city's not bankrupt. So I think it's very important that we take the steps with the taxpayers in mind, of course, and that every project is well-thought-out, and we have the means to pay for these projects. So I want to make sure that we're doing it in a way that is affordable to the taxpayer and is affordable to the city, especially in long-term, that we're not leaving our children like the federal government's doing right now with huge amounts of debt that's never gonna be paid for.
Very well. Resolutions?
None, Mayor.
Localized?
None.
Table legislation?
None.
Counsel, before we get into other business, let's take about a 10-minute break and stretch our legs, I think we go for...